Hello, good evening. Thank you for coming to our meeting today. Today is March 8th, 2018. I always love to see people in the crowd. Do we... Sorry. We need a roll call before I get started on anything else. Please.
Councilmember Overton?
Here.
Councilmember Bennett?
Here.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Here.
Mayor Sabatier?
Here. Vice Mayor Harris, would you like to lead us in pledge allegiance? Ready? Begin.
I am the President of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. If you could please remain standing. We have Tom Mapleton. Would you like to give us an invitation?
Thank you. Let us all pray. Father, I just ask that you would bring your presence tonight into this room, your great love, Lord God, and that you would bring order and that you would give us wisdom in all our choices. We ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much. Mr. Folsom, are there any changes to our agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I've got a couple of them actually. First of all, I would like to remove consent item number five. I would like to remove business item number nine. And I would like to move business item number 10 to come before the public hearing, please. That way, our...
What?
One of our employees can be in the off overtime.
Thank you very much. If I can have a motion to approve all changes. Second? Have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Jones is going to announce some from our closed sessions.
Mr. Mayor, there's no reportable action in closed session.
All right. I'm gonna step down for a presentation, and I feel very awkward about holding this. I'm just gonna hold it like this. I just spilled a lot of ink on my hands. My pen was no good. Mr. Perdak, if you could please stand here with me. I'm gonna let you grab this. I don't want to ruin anything.
We'll figure it out. You're good.
So today, we are giving a plaque to our former council member, Mr. Russ Perdak. In 2014, we... Oh, there's the microphone. In 2014, we ran together, and both of us were elected to start our very first term on the council. Right away, we were sent to Sacramento for the mayor's and council members conference that the League of Cities puts together. And we got to really get to know each other. Had dinner together, breakfast together, made more sessions together. And over the course of the years, we have found ourselves really finding a lot of common ground. And I really feel that we, together, with new staff and the council behind me, have really changed and turned around where we were heading before we got on council. That was one of the reasons we got onto the council. Every step of the way, we would have conversations, disagree, and really show that we could disagree in a very amiable way or find a lot of ways that we could agree on what it is that we wanted to see in this city. Over the course of the last four years, three years, three and a half years, I've gotten to know you from a name to an individual. I used to go to Judge's Breakfast all the time, and unfortunately, I sat in the corner because I always brought my kids with me. So I didn't get to mingle too much with everybody at Judge's Breakfast. But once I really got onto the council, things changed. And right next to me happens to be a really good friend of mine because we've gotten to know each other so well and we have such vision and we put so much effort together to make things change for us. And we've seen that change. And so, I'm really proud to have Russ here with me. I wish he hadn't left us from the council. And I'm gonna stop there before I get too far. And I'll let you speak. But ladies and gentlemen, Russ Perdak, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you all very much. It was an honor to serve here. As the mayor said, I had to leave because I felt I had another calling and I want to pursue that avenue. It's important to me, and this city is very important to me. And continuing to do the work here and continue the momentum that started is a big part of what I want to do. So with that, I want to thank everyone. Thank you for your support. And I wish you all nothing but the best as we continue to move this city forward and make it a cleaner, safer, a better place to live and raise our kids and start new businesses. Thanks, Mayor.
He's going to turn. Here you go. Here you go.
There we go.
It's your disgruntled wife without a light.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time. Appreciate it. Since Joyce is the Director of the Senior Center and since March on Meals at the Meals on Wheels is a program within the Senior Center, I'm gonna let her present this presentation.
So with great honors, I thank you, Bruno, for letting me do this. This has been really dear to my heart and I'm very proud to be the Executive Director down there at the Highland Senior Center, moving things forward. So this is the March for Meals Month. Whereas in March 22nd, 1972, President Richard Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the Older American Act of 1965 and established a national nutritional program for senior 60 years of older. Whereas the Meals on Wheels Association of America established the National March for Meals Campaign in March 2002 to recognize the historical month, the importance of Older American Act senior nutritional programs, and raise awareness about senior hunger in America. Whereas the 2018 observation of the March for Meals Campaign provides an opportunity to support senior nutritional programs that deliver vital and critical services by donating, volunteering, and raising awareness about senior hunger. Whereas volunteer drivers for the Meals on Wheels programs in Clearlake are the backbone of the program and they not only drive nutritional meals to homebound seniors and individuals with disability, but also care, caring, concerning, and attention to their well-being. And whereas the Senior Nutritional Program provides nutritional meals to seniors throughout the city and help them to avoid premature or unnecessary institutionalization. Whereas the Senior Nutritional Program also provides a powerful socialization opportunity for millions of seniors to help combat loneliness and isolation. Whereas the Senior Nutritional Program in Clearlake deserves recognition for the contribution they have made and will continue to make to our local community. Now therefore, the City Council, the City of Clearlake, does hereby proclaim March 2018 as March for Meals Month and urges every citizen to take time this month to honor our Senior Nutritional Program, the seniors they have served and the volunteers who care for them. Our recognition and involvement of the National 2018 March for Meals Campaign can enrich our entire community and help end senior hunger in America. So no senior goes hungry, which is our biggest thing here. As we don't realize how important this is, but I have many seniors that are actually homeless, which is kind of sad if you come down there and see. We don't think about it. And there is, according to the statistics, four out of six seniors that don't really know where their meals are coming from. So it's really, really important that we recognize the March for Meals this month, which ours happens to be on St. Patrick's Day. We will be marching, if it's good weather, from the Senior Center, if you're able to, down to the park. And if not, you can meet us at the park at 11 o'clock and just march around the park and help just spread the word and show your support for our programs. And then afterwards, at noon, we'll be serving the corned beef and cabbage at the Senior Center for lunch for $10. And I have my secretary here. Joyce, come up here. Her name is also Joyce. She's gonna be accepting this for our Board of Supervisors, our Board of Supervisors, our board at the center. So there you go, Joyce. And then if you have anything else you want to say. Well, that comes later. Thank you very much. And if you want to volunteer, one thing we do look for, and I have several volunteers, you're never too old to volunteer. So I have an 87-year-old. I have an 80-year-old that volunteer on a regular basis. So, you know, an hour, two hours, whatever, a month, a week. You know, we're really flexible with our volunteer hours. So we are definitely looking for volunteers. If you'd like to be a Meals on Wheels driver, you know, there is a background check that you have to do on that to protect our safety. But our drivers are really important to these seniors that are homebound. Sometimes it's the only contact that they receive. And it's... In fact, this last year, I can honestly say, we saved four seniors from dying. My Meals on Wheels drivers actually saved four seniors from dying. If they had not have showed up when they did, and I happen to be one of them that showed up, these people would have died. So it is really important, this program. It's not just about nutrition, but it's also for keeping them safe and making sure that they get the medical treatment or in-home care that they need. There's lots of other things that go along with just delivery. It's not just about the meals. But that is what the program is. We do so much more than that.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have a presentation by the Highland Senior Service Center for their annual report.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joyce Adams, and I'm the Secretary for the Board of Directors of the Highland Senior Center. And I'd like you to know that the Highland Senior Center is proudly celebrating 36 years of service for our senior community. Our purpose is to provide seniors with a support system and enables them to lead a dignified and independent life in their own homes.
Joyce, you can pull that over so you're not having to stand after the side.
Yeah. I'm always fighting with my microphone. Excuse me. We provide many services, such as our wonderful Meals on Wheels program, which provides homebound seniors with nutritional meals as well as other services that they may need, such as in-home support services. In March, all across America, we are celebrating the Meals on Wheels program. We are also excited to be celebrating our 36th anniversary this year. In celebration, we will be extending the route of our annual March for Meals walkathon to Austin Park. Those who cannot or choose not to take that walk down Olympic Drive can join us at Austin Park for a walk around the park in support of the Meals on Wheels program. This will show our community, state, and federal leaders of the City of Clearlake supports our programs. Local and... Excuse me. Local community support is vital to the success of our programs at the Senior Center. We are looking to our community to help bridge the gap and have shortfall funding with the cost of living going up and healthcare rising. Many seniors in our own neighborhoods are unable to supply themselves with the means to eat healthy foods. Please join us on our walk and help bring awareness to the meals and activities in our Highland Senior Center that our Highland Senior Center provides to our community. And I have a list of events we're gonna have this year, starting with March 17th, March for Meals. It's gonna be a really great event for our Meals on Wheels program. We are having March to the park and back. We're gonna have vendor booths and people who want just information or you can be selling things. They're free. And afterwards, we're gonna have a corned beef and cabbage dinner for $10. And that will conclude our March event. In April, we're having a garden party. Join up for the Senior Center. LC, PEG TV, January 8th, and NCO. Tour of the community garden. Demonstration by master gardener. Demonstration of gardening. Cooking classes. And a tour of the PEG TV studio. Then in May, we're having a show in Stein Karp and/or motorcycle show at the Senior Center. July 4th, we do vending for the Lions Club parade. We'll have a booth there selling probably sandwiches. Maybe... We haven't determined our menu yet. And in September 8th, we have our annual hoedown with dinner and dancing. And all through the year, we're gonna be having dollar drives. You'll see. Us, people, kids out in front of the stores with jugs collecting dollars for our senior meals. And the importance of our fundraising shows in our figures here. From 2014-15 year to the 2016-17 year, we have a deficit of $11,000. And overall fundraising is down $10,372 over the last two years. And revenue from 2014 through '17 is down $21,070. So we need your support. We need the community support for our Senior Center, which is vital to our community. And I also have a profit loss statement, which I'm not gonna read, but I do have it if anyone wants to see it. Shows our profit loss for the year for our center. And that is the conclusion of my presentation. Thank you, gentlemen, and ladies.
Thank you so much.
Let me state one thing is when she said deficit, it doesn't mean we're in a deficit. It just means that deficit is our funding from '14 to '17. That the deficit is just less. So we're not in a deficit.
It's a short fall.
Just, yeah, shortfall of what we normally would raise. And this is where the donation from the hospital.
Right. Yes, it is. Yeah.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Now, we're gonna move on to public comments. First one I have is Shanda Harry, running for judge.
Good evening. I just wanted to come down and introduce myself. My name is Shanda Harry. I'm running for judge for Department Four. Judge Hedstrom is retiring at the end of his next term. So there'll be an election June 5th of this year to replace him, and I am hoping to do so. I've been an attorney for 17 years. 15 of those years have been in Lake County. I'm currently Deputy County Counsel. I was a Deputy DA. I was General Counsel for one of the... Well, for Robinson Rancheria for a while. I attended law school at UCLA. And I think my next step in public service is to be a judge. And so, the election is June 5th, and I'm encouraging everyone to come out. And I just wanted to come down and say hello and introduce myself to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Bill Shields. I'm guessing from what it shows here that you have questions.
Good evening. I see your bodies well. Anyway, you people have this old boy totally confused. I don't like walking around confused. Now, this last town hall meeting that you had, it was my understanding that you was hiring a chief of police. But all it was, you brought some guy from California Lake of Cities. And I don't know how much you paid him to come here and take information. And I thought, man, over the years, I've hired people. You know? Don't you... You people know how to hire somebody? You have to pay somebody to tell you what kind of person you need? You got me dumbfounded. It doesn't even make sense.
Thank you, Mr. Shields. Is there anybody else in the audience that would wish to give us a public comment that is not on an agenda item on our agenda? Yes, please come on up. You look like you have something to say.
I'm sorry, there were no phones left when I got here to put that in. I'm Cheryl Womack, 4649 West 40th Street here in Clearlake. And my subject is Clearlake Community Watch Meeting that we had on February 27th. I just wanted to do a brief summary of what the conclusions were. We had 18 either in attendance or with Gmail that had an opportunity to vote or identify what they thought were some of the concerns. And the number one issue that came out of that meeting were the issues of loose dogs. Dogs are attacking other animals. Cats that we no longer are able to have spay in the lake port and just our process for animal control response. Number two is the homeless housing, getting squatters, and especially after dark traffic in our neighborhoods from those pedestrians. The third one is blight in properties, illegal dumping of garbage, abandoned or broken vehicles. So I'm just wanting to share that with you and the rest of the general public who may not have attended that meeting. We will continue to look at these issues, not only as a group but with the city, and see what we might be able to come up for with resolutions. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public wish to speak on an item not on the agenda? All right. We're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Is there any item that the council wishes to pull other than item number five, which has already been removed? Is there anyone from the public that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Okay. I'll bring it back to the council.
Mayor, I'd like to make a wish in a way that the consent items with number five being removed.
Second? I have a motion and a second by Vice Mayor Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Moving on. And we want to do item number 10 first. Mr. Folsom.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to introduce Adeline Brown, who is our engineering tech to discuss this report.
The public works in the public is in need of purchasing equipment to replace existing equipment that we have that is in disrepair or doesn't meet current standards. On February 22nd, the Measure V Oversight Committee, along with the City Council, reviewed expenditures of appropriations and reviewed the cash flow projections. Part of that cash flow was their acquisition of equipment for Measure V purposes. And that equipment entailed buying a roller, a five-year dump truck, a backhoe, a trailer, a boom truck, and a grader. The total of all of these items is $530,000. And the purchase of this equipment would come through the National Joint Powers Authority, United Rentals, Richie Brothers, all government service contracts, with the exception of Richie Brothers, which is an auction house. A lot of jurisdictions engaging in road construction projects. The equipment is in high demand and management is requesting that we... That you authorize and not to exceed amount for all of these purchases in the amount of $530,000. In order to do so, we request that the city manager be given a waiver of the $20,000 limitation for these transactions, and the equipment will benefit the city for much of the 20-year period.
Yes. So that, as you know, the typical way that we would purchase equipment is that we would get some kind of a bid or an estimate on purchasing something or a quote. And then if it was over $20,000, we would then come to the council, get your approval, and then go forward with the purchase. Because of where we're looking to purchase these vehicles through auctions and other places, the inventory fluctuates on a basis that could be a lot faster than... If you were to come to the council, by the time we got the authorization to purchase, the equipment may not be there anymore. So we're asking for this. We won't do this on a very often basis, but this is kind of a special circumstance. We just ask that you give us the authorization to purchase the equipment that we've talked about so that we can get it and get it working on the roads as soon as possible.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the council of staff? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, bring it back to you.
I have a motion for you. I'd like to make a motion to authorize Measure V funds up to $530,000 for the purchase of equipment.
Second? I have a motion and a second. Can I please get a roll call?
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Mayor Sabatier?
Aye. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Brown. And now we'll move on on our agenda to item number eight for the public here. Mr. Folsom.
Thank you. I would like to introduce Lee Lambert, our Public Works Supervisor.
This is a public... This is a public hearing to confirm assessments for administrative penalties. The purpose of this hearing is to consider and act upon any and all protests of proposed assessments for recovery of the costs of administrative penalties for failure to evade public nuisances. Upon consideration of the evidence and testimony, councilman grant the protest and revise the resolution to remove the assessment or deny the protest and confirm the assessment as proposed or modify, reducing the amount of assessment and revise the resolution to reflect the modified assessment. Property owners were given notice of the violations and adequate time to voluntarily correct the violations. Property owners failed to obey public nuisances on the said property within the prescribed time. Property owners were given notice of their rights to appeal deposition of administrative penalties. Property owners failed to submit in writing a notice of appeal of administrative penalties within the prescribed time allowed. Attached to the staff report is the proposed resolution confirming assessment and statement of expenses. Staff recommends that council confirm all assessments as proposed. Should the council or the property owner wish to address me or any of the officers were willing to respond to questions. And I'd like to present this to council as evidence of the properties.
Thank you for that.
A staff recommends that, at the mayor's discretion, the list of proposed assessments be read by address and property owner only. After reading the list of proposed assessments, if any person wishes to speak on behalf of any said property, then the mayor shall pull it from the list for comment and testimony to be heard. Mr. Mayor, I ask for your approval to move forward with this recommendation.
So as we all know, this is a process that can take some time. So we're always trying to fine-tune it, especially as there's many more coming in the next upcoming months. Is there a consensus to go ahead and try this out and read out the addresses and see if there's anybody here on the behalf of the properties and then go ahead and hear their testimony for those properties? And then move on. Let's go ahead and move forward, please.
Okay. Property one, 16188 28th Avenue. Owner Curtis Parker. Property two, 15576 33rd Avenue.
And I'm gonna pause you right there real quick. If there's anybody to represent the 28th Avenue property, please raise your hand. Okay. Let's go ahead and...
Actually, Mr. Mayor, now that we're getting into each property, in case someone does come up, I think it's a good time to open the public hearing.
Okay. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on behalf of the 28th Avenue property? Okay. We'll bring it back. Let's go ahead and keep going.
15576 33rd Avenue.
One-five-five-seven-six-thirty-third Avenue, owner Charles Green.
Anybody here to represent that property? Anybody here from the public wishes to speak about this property? Okay, let's move on.
Property three, four-zero-four-three Arnold Avenue, owner Kendrick Keaton.
Anybody here to represent that property? Anybody from the public wish to speak on that property? Move on.
Property four, one-four-zero-seven-zero Connaughty Street, owner Richard Garibbi.
Anybody here to represent the property? Anybody from the public wish to speak about this property? Okay.
Property five, four-four-five-six Hill Avenue, owner is Ella Stewart.
Anybody here on behalf of this property? Anybody from the public wish to speak about this property? Move on.
Property six, three-one-eight-zero Second Street, owner is State Trustee Services LLC trustee.
Anybody here to testify for this property? Anybody from the public wish to speak about this property? Okay.
Property seven, five-three-five-zero Crawford Avenue, owner Fernando Aguilar Jr.
Okay, we have somebody here for that, and let's go ahead and finish through the other properties first, and then we'll go ahead and come back to you. Thank you for being here.
Property eight, one-four-three-two-one Woodland Drive, owner Diana McComb.
Is there anybody here on behalf of this property? Anybody wish to speak about this property? Okay.
And last is property number nine, one-four-three-three-one Woodland Drive, owned by Morgan Tate and Brewer LLC.
Anybody here to represent this property? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this property? All right, so we're going to talk about property number seven. Five-three-five, Crawford Avenue. And we're gonna go through the code enforcement officers' report first, and then you're free to come up and speak. It's gonna take a minute. At least we still get to see the pictures. I can't read what it says there. Can you read that? Can you read this? I can't. One one. I think it says number six. All right, so. Right. Is that it? Yeah, it is. We went just by. That's six. That's six. Thank you. Please hold on while we deal with the technical difficulties, we will get to where we should be. Someone read that for me? I wanna say this says seven. Oh. That says A, so that's confusing. What does this one say? Start from the current. Oh, that's eight, so we'll go backwards. A little bit slicker last time. There we are.
Okay, so property number seven, five-three-five-zero Crawford Avenue, owned by Fernando Aguilar Jr. The assessment is five thousand dollars. In violation of several City of Clear Lake Municipal Codes, including broken windows and doors, accumulation of trash and debris, being a public nuisance, causing visual blight, lack of hot and cold running water, lack of required electrical lighting, and faulty weather protection. I'm the signing officer. The original photos, before I get to this, I'd like to also add, this is a vacant house, well, it was a vacant house and was red-tagged for squatters living in it. We've had no contact with the owner since then, and it appears there are people in and out of the house to this day with no proof of water or power. The original photos were taken on August fifteenth of last year. This is the front. And then current photos as of today.
Anything else? Mr. Mayor? Any questions from the council before we hear testimony? Sir, if you could please step up to the podium?
Look, maybe Joseph Lopez, here representing Linda's family. She's in a wheelchair around, so. She's interested in this property, has tried to contact the owner. She went to the county to discuss the taxes that were due and pay the back taxes, and she'd like to renovate this property and move into it if it can pass the code and be wheelchair accessible since she uses a wheelchair to get around. So, I'm not sure what I can offer you in that avenue, except she wants to know if there's any way that this might be your responsibility, if she likes to make some arrangements to rectify the assessment of penalties.
So if I understand you correctly, the tenant is trying to.
No, no, she's not a tenant. She has tried to contact Mr. Aguilar. She's interested in purchasing the property.
Gotcha.
So, she had been able to contact him, she talked to a man in really Costa Mesa, Fernando Aguilar Jr., and he said it wasn't him and he wasn't interested in it. So she's been contacting the county, and she did go there yesterday and pay the back taxes, and she wants to bring the property up to code so she can move in. But as I said, she's wheelchair, wheelchair around, so. It has to be approved by IHS Social Services, as well as the county for code violations.
Any questions?
If Philip has anything to do with anything that we could do here, I guess we're aware of that, yeah. That's above us, as far as the means for that property and what you need to do would be.
She just wanted to make sure that you guys understand, you know, sort of intention.
And it seems that we've been struggling to get ahold of the owner as well, since there has been zero communication, if I remember correctly from what you just said, correct?
That's correct.
And so.
We look forward to your help in applying this with the city codes and ordinances.
Without a title change, I'll let our officer.
I did make contact with the subject he's referring to one time. She was squatting in the house, and by law, she's still currently squatting in the house.
No, no.
She has no authority to be at the property.
She's not squat, she's not really.
You do realize that, she does realize that, even if she pays the taxes, she still doesn't.
Right, right. Like I said, she's interested in buying property. And she contacted the owner, or the registered owner, Mr. Fernando Aguilar.
Unfortunately, there's nothing we can do on this end. It's with the county and finding the owner and being able to change the title over, but at this point in time, we have no power over changing that.
But she responsible for the.
No, the owner.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. So I'll bring this back to, anybody else wish to speak on this property before we close the public hearing? Can we close the public hearing?
I have a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, forgot to say aye. Bringing it back to council for action.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number two-zero-one-eight-dash, or dash-zero-nine, resolution of the city, council of the city clearly confirming special assessments consisting of administrative penalties for failure to evade public nuisance and governing against real properties in accordance with sections one-dash-five, one-dash-nine, two-dash-one-point-six, ten-dash-one-point-seven, ten-dash-one-point-nine, ten-dash-one-point-twelve, ten-dash-two-point-two-B, ten-dash-two-point-four, ten-dash-two-point-five, ten-dash-two-point-six, ten-dash-two-point-seven, ten-dash-two-point-eight, ten-dash-three-point-one, ten-dash-three-point-three, ten-dash-five, and ten-dash-five-point-six of the Clear Lake Municipal Code.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second by councilmember Overton. Can I get a roll call for this, please?
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
And that concludes our public hearing. We will move on to, if I'm correct, item number eleven. Mr. Folsom.
Actually, councilmember Overton, you need to state a, don't mind saying a reason for that, I think you need to be aware of it.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
I will be recruiting myself because I'm the executive director of the organization on this agenda item.
Thank you very much.
And so essentially, there's a, I think a typo there, it's actually a sponsorship of the Meals on Wheels, or the March for Meals program, which is the walk-on and luncheon that was discussed earlier.
Or the event itself?
The event itself. They're asking for permission to put the city's logo on some T-shirts. It's no cost to the city for the sponsorship, they would just like to have the city endorsement of the program, and we thought it'd be appropriate for the council to take action on that. Good set report.
Any questions from council? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this item? Very quiet today. Let's bring it back to the council. Do we wanna talk about this? Do we wanna make an action?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the senior center to utilize our logo on their.
Well, it's actually not the senior center, it's the, excuse me, March.
March for Meals. March for Meals program to utilize our logo for their program.
Second. I have a motion and a second by councilmember Bennett. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Thank you for getting councilmember Overton back in here. And I will bring this back to Mr. Folsom for your city manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things, we did meet with the chief of police recruiter last week. That meeting was for information, to find out from the community what were the skills, experiences, abilities, requirements that we should be recruiting for in the next chief of police. We expect that that recruitment will begin on next week, and that it'll be out for six weeks, and that the final interviews with council will take place on June eighth, and then hiring at whatever point right after that. I did attend the community watch meeting that was discussed earlier in the evening. There was a good turnout, so it was a good meeting, to hear what the community had to say about some of the issues of concern. We had an animal control ad hoc committee meeting that several of the council members attended, so I'll let you all discuss that in more detail. We had a planning commission meeting earlier this week. A number of things that were discussed, we, the planning commission did approve a use permit for the raise, the height, raising the height of the signs for that shopping center that would include Tractor Supply and Big Five, so it will also include kind of a little welcome to Clear Lake on there, so it's a nice little enhancement. They also, the planning commission also approved two out of three use permits for the cannabis businesses. There is one for manufacturing that they wanted a little bit more information, and that will be going back to the planning commission at the next meeting, I believe, which is March twentieth. The development agreement was recommended to come to city council for your consideration, so that'll be coming to the next council meeting on March twenty-second. We had a good meeting with regard to the Clean Up, Clear Lake Cleanup Day event, which is upcoming, but I'll let mayor talk more about that. And we are reorganizing some of our personnel and our functions to become more efficient and effective, and there'll be more information about that coming out in future meetings. Just to talk about some upcoming events, tomorrow, there is the Lake Division meeting in Cloverdale, so hopefully the representatives will be attending that. I'll be attending that as well. The Chamber Mixer is next week, on Tuesday. There's a planning commission meeting on the twentieth, we have a marketing committee meeting on the twenty-first, another council meeting on the twenty-second. The Lake County Chamber asked me to provide this information, that there is a CTA Certified Tourism Ambassador training upcoming on March twenty-eighth at Twin Pine, so if anyone is interested in attending that, that will be in the afternoon there, and it's open for public to attend that. Just another reminder, on April first, the Forum Seven Hundreds are due, so please, if you haven't already addressed that, take care of that. And April twenty-eighth is the date that's been selected for the Clear Lake Cleanup Day. We had a really good turnout last year, hope to have an even better one this year. But again, I'll let you talk more about that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Bennett?
Also attended, along with other members here, the community watch meeting. It was a decent turnout, I was pleased to see some community members there. Next time, maybe larger turnout, hopefully we'll get some better publicity for it. Had a PEG meeting this last Monday, that's our community television that we're being live now, this last Monday. We adopted our budget, five minutes, for the, our capital budget for twenty eighteen, twenty-nine, and adopted our budget, which is taking us forward into here. We still have a couple of things on our board, one is a representative from Lakeport, and one is a community member of large. We discussed other areas, but I'm gonna leave that up to my fellow councilwoman here to cover that, because it has to do with the Highlands Senior Flash Community Center fundraiser that we have going on in partnership with the PEG. I'll let Joyce address that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Overton?
Hey, well, after our last meeting, I went to the youth center and checked out their new PEG job and everything, it looks like everything's going really well there, so I'm really happy to see that going, and it looks like they got some boxing going on and some games there, so let's go down there and check that out. And then as you said, as councilmember Bennett said, I was at the PEG meeting, we're doing a joint venture on April twenty-eighth, and we're calling it the garden party, because what we want to do is publicize basically our community garden, our community center, and our community access channel, and the senior center, since we're all gonna be kind of there in one spot. So, we're gonna have games playing, and we're gonna have master gardeners doing some different demonstrations, and CO is going to be doing some demonstrations, we'll have a tour of the garden, tour of our facility that we have painted, hopefully we can get some more people in and get some more painting done, but it's looking pretty good. And then the new PEG station studio will be in there, so hopefully they have that all set up, and we can kinda do a tour and just kinda see that everybody can kinda get aware of what we're doing there at the community center for our community, and hopefully we can get some more people involved and volunteer to help us finish up what we need to do there. So that's the plan, it really isn't, I wouldn't call it too much of a fundraiser, more of a, it'd be nice, raise funds, but probably more of a information, I'll try to get the public there to see what we're doing at our community center, what we're doing there as organizations. So, and then as we said, our St. Patrick's Day, Saturday seventeenth is our March for Meals, and then at noon, we'll be serving our corned beef and cabbage dinner, so please come down, it's only ten dollars. And I will be also at some of the meetings that our city manager has mentioned, so I don't think I probably need to go into detail on that. And please, if you're a community person and need to be on the PEG board, you know, we need, they need to get those community people involved, so I may have somebody from Lakeport, but we're still looking for just a, they're still looking for a general community. So please ask your friends, it's really interesting and very well, they're really growing on that too, so from when I started on that board, my. but it's looking pretty good. And then the new PEG station studio will be in there. So, hopefully, they have that all set up. We can kind of do a tour and just kind of see that everybody can kind of get aware of what we're doing there at the community center for our community, you know, and hopefully, we can get some more people involved and volunteer to help us finish up what we need to do there. So, that's the plan. It really isn't... I wouldn't call it too much of a fundraiser. More of a... It'd be nice for these funds, but probably more of a information and try to get the public there to see what we're doing at our community center, what we're doing there as organizations. So... And then, as we said, our St. Patrick's Day, Saturday 17th is our March for Meals. And then at noon, we'll be serving our corned beef and cabbage dinner. So, please come down. It's only $10. And I will be also at some of the meetings that our city manager has mentioned, so I don't think I probably need to go into detail on that. And please, if you're a community person and need to be on the PEG board, you know, we need... They need to get those community people involved. So, I may have somebody from Lakeport, but we're still looking for just a... They're still looking for a general community. So, please ask your friends. It's really interesting and very well... They're really growing on that, too, so from when I started on that board myself. So, it's nice to see all these things really coming. It takes a long time, right? I know it's years. But, you know, really, all our things in our city are starting to come together. So, I'm really proud of all of us, including Mr. Perdak out there who helped us do that. And that's it.
Thank you very much for your report. Vice Mayor Harris?
I did attend the animal control ad hoc meeting, and that was a lot of ground made. We had different elements of our community that are involved in the animal care and came together. And we think we made some significant progress there, and we'll continue to make progress with that. So, it's nice to see the community come together for ambitious goals. And I did go down to the youth center and for their open house. And they also... We did a Facebook Live to kind of go over the aspects of the youth center and what it can provide for the youth in our community. And yes, it's looking very good. It's coming along quite well. It's something that needs to be utilized more often. They're looking for volunteers there, so that's definitely something that a person can do if they wanted to assist in the community, especially if they're looking to work with the youth of our community. Today, I got to participate in a fundraising event for St. Jude Research Hospital for children that are going through cancer, and that's something that's near and dear to my heart. I got to be part of the radio personality today. I will be tomorrow as well for the radio station here, Q106. So, that's my adventures.
All right. Thank you very much. I just want to briefly touch again on the youth center. Their boxing program. We got to see a little bit of an exhibition from two of the youth that are participating in the program. Everybody was very impressed with the coach and the youth that were there. And right now, they already have 40 students, 40 young people that are active in the program, and they have yet to advertise for it. So, I'm really looking forward. I sense a huge new rejuvenation of excitement about the youth center with the new board, and I'm really happy that that board is putting out that kind of energy because that's what we need to feel, and that's... I want to support them with what they're wanting to do. Over the past couple of weeks, I've met with a couple of different investors that want to come in our city and spend their money. And I'm saying yes, please. So, I'm looking forward to their conversations continuing with city staff so that we can get some of these projects moving and making sure that they're going in the right direction so that they're gonna benefit our community as much as possible. The animal ad hoc committee is a great response to a really great need of what it is that we're doing. Our next committee meeting, I believe, is on the 20th, if I'm correct. And we'll be focusing on the spay-neuter process as well as other processes that animal control has to deal with. And so, I think we're focusing on the right things, and I appreciate the conversation and the group that we've gathered together. It feels really realistic as far as the way that we're looking at how it is that we need to deal with our animal control. Community watch. What was brought up was animals, squatters, blights, and et cetera under those specific headers. Those all fit within our city goals. And so, I think that those are things that we are already definitely looking at, and so I'm looking forward to finding ways that the community members can help us in order to get and reach those goals at a faster pace. Did have a Clear Lake citywide cleanup meeting. It will be on April 28th. CC4C and I have taken the lead because city staff is way too busy to be organizing an event of such size. Please, volunteer, come out. Help us clean up this city. The amount of work that gets put into this one single day, I believe last year was 28 cubic yards. Maybe-
One half. Especially if you-
Maybe in the 50s.
If you throw in what was done behind rez, it was 100 cubic yards.
Oh, the rez was huge, and that was a separate one. But yes, our plan is to focus between Pomos School and Park Street and focus on that area where there's unfortunately more garbage being dumped, even though we've cleaned it up multiple times in the past five years. But all that garbage, it affects our environment. It affects our lake. It affects everything. And so, we're gonna go out there and clean it up. Join a team, make a group, find your place. If you want to join us in that location or if you want to clean up our parks or your neighborhood, we're looking forward to seeing as many people as possible joining hands and making our city a cleaner place. I wanted to mention two things that I'm really happy about that happens in our community. March 10th, please, if you can, go to Lower Lake High School. There will be the closing ceremonies for Connaughtie Basketball League, and it's from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. They put a lot of work together. This is a group of wonderful volunteers that have, I believe, between 300 and 400 young people playing basketball, and they put their loving hearts into it. And so, if you could please go and support not only the youth that have been playing basketball, but also the nonprofit group of Connaughtie Basketball League. The following day, we're starting a new sport. That will be the opening day for South Shore Little League. Please go to Valentine's Field and show your support. I'm sure you know the time. I don't have the time on me.
I don't... Unfortunately, I do not have the time on me, but I will be there. I just have to get the time.
9 o'clock. So, please show up at 9:00 a.m. Support not only what South Shore Little League does for our community, but support every single one of those kids that are playing baseball out there. There's nothing better than to hear somebody applaud for the work that you do in hitting the ball or catching the ball or tagging somebody up. So, please go out there to support. And next week, we have also our Lathco meeting. So, Lathco in the morning and marketing in the night. We got stuck with the long Wednesdays on those third weeks. It's been a blast the last couple of weeks. There's been some wonderful interest in the city of Clear Lake and some wonderful changes happening. I'm really looking forward to what's gonna happen within the next six months, two years. And I'm very excited. So, thank you all for coming to our meeting tonight. But first, are there any future agenda items? All right. I think we have enough on our plates already. Thank you, everybody, for showing up tonight for the meeting. It's important that we have people sharing their voices with us. Have a wonderful evening. Have a good night.